Now I'll call this amen to order on, this is the first time I've even got started, the preacher comes down, this is great. I called this me in order on Monday, July the 18th. Very glad to have you tonight. Pastor Jeffrey Pennington, Smyrna First Baptist Church, who's in a hurry.
Not at all.
He will give our invocation, listen, pledge the flag, so everyone please rise. Glad to have you.
Well, thank you very much. Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, we do thank you for today and Lord, we are just so blessed, blessed to live in such a beautiful part of Atlanta. Father, we're so thankful for Smyrna, we're so thankful for such solid leadership that you have placed for such an incredible time in our city's history. So Father, I'm just so thankful for our mayor, I'm so thankful for this city council. Father, I just ask that you'll give them wisdom, that Lord, that we'll be able to navigate this wonderful season well and Lord, even as I pray these things, I'm reminded of so much unrest around our country and Lord, as we mourn the loss of the officers down in Baton Rouge and other places in recent weeks. Father, we just pray for your safety to be upon our police department right here in Smyrna. Father bless Chief Lee with wisdom and we just pray for their safety as they do so much good to keep us safe and protected. Lord, I thank you so much for this meeting, I just pray your blessing on it. Christ then we pray. Amen. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I thank you so much Jeffrey and we would, anyone that's looking for our church or is new to town, I'm sure the folks at the Smyrna First Baptist Church at 1275 Church Route love, have you come by and they'll visit with us, great church. Agenda changes, we have none, the Merrill report, we really don't have one for that. We get into the item four, which is land issues, zoning and annexation. Item A is 2016-231, so public hearings on request Z16-005, approval of a special land use permit for the use of a modular classroom building, 8.83 acre land lots 595, 596, 597. At 3130 Atlanta Road Covenant Christian School is the applicant here, just want to make sure Covenant Christian School. You want to give the background on that first? I think they probably, were they notified? Okay, go ahead and give us the background on that and then we'll decide what.
Mayor, as you stated, this is Covenant Christian School. This has to do with a prefabricated modular building and the issue dates back to March 3rd of 2008 and our community development department is here with specifics, but this is renewal for the placement of that trailer.
Good evening. As Mr. Jones stated, this is a renewal of a special land use permit for the continued use of a modular classroom building at Covenant Christian School. The planning and zoning board heard this request on June 13th. They made a recommendation for approval by a vote of seven zero. As stated, this property is zoned R20, it has a feature of land use of public institutional. They're requesting to be able to maintain their modular classroom building.
I think the applicant, I hope the applicant, all the applicants, good, they're here.
Yeah. They're proposing to use this existing building or this modular building until they're able to construct their permanent building onsite. Here's the zoning map, y'all have seen this before, zoned R20, Brunner Park to the southeast is a zoned OI and everything else is R20 and RAD, single family. Just to give you a little brief history, back in 2008, mayor and council approved the initial special land use permit by a vote of four zero. During that initial rezoning, we placed a stipulation that they come back every two years for approval of renewing that special land use permit. So they've come back in 2010, 2012 and 2014 respectively. Here is the location of the modular building onsite, it's a long Collier Drive and it's back behind the building. Here's a picture of the building as it sits today. Really blends in pretty well with the rest of the buildings on campus. Community development recommends approval of the modular classroom building with the following condition, this is the same condition we carried over for the past three requests. The modular building shall only be allowed for a period of 24 months after the date of approval. If the applicant shall need the modular building for a longer period of time, the applicant shall reapply for approval. With that, I'll answer any questions.
I'm not sure that I ask if there, this is a public hearing, is anyone here that's in opposition to or that would like to make any public comment concerning the issuance of this land use permit? Let the record show there is none and I just noticed Doug, I'll turn it over, you just noticed that the applicants came in, I'll turn it over to Doug. This shouldn't be a very long hearing, I hope they've been good folks, good neighbors, but I'll turn it over to Doug Stone if he wants to get the applicant to come forward.
Yes, if we have the applicant come on up. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and definitely agree that they have been good neighbors. I actually live just around the corner of this, of the church and the school and they've done a great job in the sense of how they've integrated that modular building to match the look of the existing structure too. So unless someone points it out to you and I have to be reminded that it's actually a modular building and everything, so.
Yeah, just the record, we tell us who you are.
Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
And I'm going to tell you, don't mess this up now, so you got it.
Get this part right. Good to see all of you, thank you for your time. Brent Sutheth, I'm president of the board there at Covenant Christian School.
And Brandon, I think you live down the street too, don't you?
Yes, sir, I'm a neighbor too, so it's important that it looks good to me from a, I'm HOA president too, so I got a little pressure there to make sure that we keep it looking nice, but that's been the goal, is to always make sure it matches the landscaping look of the campuses. Even last year ago, we repainted the building to match the painting scheme of the church so that it blends really well, that's always been the goal.
And I think the long-term goal is obviously to eventually replace the building if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, sir. So in 2015, 2014, we hired a development director to help with fundraising efforts. In the last year, we raised, right in the ballpark of $80,000, which was our highest raise to date. Year ago summer, we spent about $185,000, church and school combined renovating interior of the existing church building in order to, phase one of our project for aligning the church to one area of the facility and the school to the other area of the facility. The goal then would be to raise funds and build out on that space where the annex sits today.
Right.
We've got a little more fundraising to go, but that's the direction we're marching.
I understand. That's great, that's good. So at this point, Mr. Mayor, if we're, obviously, if no one has any other questions, I'm gonna, we need to close the public hearing, I assume?
Yep.
And so at this point, I'm going to make a motion and just to make sure, you know, obviously you understand the stipulations and coming back to us again and hopefully in, you know, you'll be closer to your goal here in 24 months.
Yes, sir.
Again, so my motion is for, on agenda A is 2016-231, a zoning request for Z16-005, approval of a special land use permit for the use of a modular classroom building on 8.83 acres, land lots 595, 596 and 597 at 3130 Atlanta Road Covenant Christian School. Second.
Motion second to approve this. Y'all been great neighbors and we hope we've been the same.
You have.
We have a little event every Tuesday down there, I think that we work closely with, so we appreciate that, our cooperation. If there's no other discussion, all those in favor of the motion, please vote, it's already approved, seven zero.
Excellent.
That's quick, thank you very much.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Before we go into the next public hearing item, I fail to ask if there was any candidates that are running for public office that would like to say anything. I know we got elections a week from tomorrow, which would be the 26th and there's also a general election in November and I noticed one candidate, looked like he was a candidate, anyone that'd like to come forward and just briefly tell us what you're running for and go from there. Apologize for not recognizing, blended in with the audience.
No, it's no problem. Hello, everybody, hope everybody's doing well. I'm Dr. Jahah Howard, I'm a pediatric dentist running for state senate, District 6, which involves Smyrna, Vinings, Buckhead and a little bit of Sandy Springs. So I'll make this quick, as we know in our country and in our state, we've kind of gotten ourselves into a very polarized society and it's time to have a voice for the middle, time to have a voice for someone that can listen to both sides and really move forward together. So I look forward to your vote in November on the presidential ballot for state senate, District 6, thank you for the time.
It's just thank you for all your involvement you've had with the schools and the wave of excellence. We do appreciate that so much, it's made a difference here. Thank you so much. Anyone else running for public office? Okay. We'll go back to the public hearing portion of the agenda. Item B, 2016-233, it's a public hearings on request Z16-007, rezoning from LC and GC to MU conditional for the development of a new restaurant, 0.142 acres and land lot 452 Concord Road and Hollis Street Smyrna Restaurant Concept LLC. The background, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. This recommendation comes to you, the community development department is recommending approval. The property is currently zoned LC and GC and it's being requested to be rezoned to multi-use conditional. There are 15 stipulations and there are 10 of those are special conditions. It's a four-sided brick architecture building that will front Concord Road and community development department is here if we have any specific questions.
Is the applicant here? I think I saw him in, I think I saw him in the back, is applicant here? Hey McClure, is he here?
I know that Mr. McClure is out of town, but I was told that his business partner would be here this evening.
Mr. Cochran, this, okay, there may be an issue with the time, since we, meetings used to be at 7:30, moved to 7:00. Is there anyone here that's in opposition to this or that would like to make any public comment? If you're here and want to speak, I hate to delay any longer, but we're gonna, we will hold this until, until the applicant shows up, hopefully. We're not going to be at 11 or 12 o'clock waiting for the applicant to show up, so we just hold this? Okay. Let's go to item, let's go to, item five is formal business. A is adoption of the 2016 millage rate, 8.99. That is item 2016-267, Mr. Jones, the background, please.
Mayor and council, this millage rate 8.99 is still, stayed consistent since 2006 and it's the, it's the foundation upon which the current FY17 budget was created and the staff supports the recommendation to move forward with an 8.99 millage rate.
Is this, we've already had public hearings on this, is that correct?
Yes, sir, our finance directors here, if you have specific questions, but we have held, I believe, three public hearings on the current millage rate proposal.
Yeah, we held two last Monday at 10:00 and then at 6:00, we had one person show up at 10:00, then we had another one this morning and no one attended this morning.
Okay, I'll turn this over to Mr. Finley, who chairs the finance administration.
Mr. Mayor, in keeping with our fiscally responsible governance model in the city of Smyrna, we have continued to keep our millage rate at 8.99. This is our 11th consecutive year at that rate and I'm proud that we have the ability to manage our budget according to those standards and I hereby move approval of 2016-267, adoption of the 2016 millage rate of 8.99 mils.
Motion second to set the millage rate 8.99. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved, seven zero. Item B under formal business is 2016-242, approval of consulting contract with Core Engineering to conduct a land use and transportation study of South Cobb Drive from Wendy Hill to Concord Road. Mr. Jones, the background, please.
Mayor, this dates back to December 2015. The city was notified by the Georgia Department of Transportation that there was grant with some funding available to do, it's under the surface transportation program, urban category, and this grant would apply along South Cobb Drive from Wendy Hill to Concord Road and there was a 20% match associated with whatever the ward was, so the impact to the city's budget is $30,000, but in exchange for the $30,000 match, we receive additional $120,000 from state DOT, so we have $150,000 to work with. It's about a one and a half mile long stretch and they'll analyze land use, transportation issues, opportunities and challenges along that corridor and this will be ongoing. The RFP was issued in 2016 and there was a couple of firms that applied, Core Engineering was the selected firm to move forward with the work and we have members of community development and public works present if you have specific questions.
This would fall under, Ms., I'm sorry.
Four, three and five.
With three and five, it's another one, Wilkinson, I can flip a coin, whoever wants to, whoever raises, it's in both y'all's wards.
Yeah, that's fine.
I just want to say that I'm very excited about this study. I've been asking about this segment of South Cobb Drive, most of it goes through Ward 5, some of it is in Ward 3, but it's been, pardon me?
A pretty good bit now, actually, since the rezoning.
Yes, and anyway, I think that I started understanding that South Cobb Drive is a state highway and we're very limited on what can be done there without going to the state and they were, it was, it's difficult to get things done without having a study done to show them what we would, what we would like to do, so I'm excited about this study and we've been talking about it a long time, so, and maybe Terry might like to talk about it as well.
Thanks. No, just to echo what Susan said, particularly because this is a state highway, which I think is important to remember because we have people talk about, you know, a lot of things that happen along South Cobb Drive, especially with regards to pedestrian crossings and it's something for which we are very limited with what we can do, so I do hope and I'm optimistic that as a result of this study, it really enables us to have some dialogue with the state and to open up some lines of communication and also foster some new ideas with regards to what we can do to improve connectivity and transportation and land use along South Cobb Drive, because I really think that as a result of in large part what we did with purchasing the Hickory Lakes apartment several years ago, that's now the Smyrna Grove property, we really are now seeing what we hoped would happen and that is that economic halo effect along South Cobb Drive and along that corridor and as we start to get more and more proposals and change of use for different parcels along that corridor, I think it's going to be very important that we have some kind of information, we've done some vetting that we have this kind of a transportation study, really exactly like what we're doing along the Spring Road corridor in anticipation of everything that's going to be happening with SunTrust Park. We're seeing that economic halo effect, we have, we're having some economic successes now along South Cobb Drive that really is the next area in Smyrna that I think is going to be, where we're going to be seeing a lot of redevelopment and revitalization and so I'm very pleased that we're going to be doing this study.
Ms. Wilkinson.
Okay, I'd like to make the motion for approval of item, is it 2B or 4B?
5B.
5B, sorry, okay. Approval of 5B, 2016-242, approval of a consulting contract with Core Engineering to conduct a land use and transportation study of South Cobb Drive from Wendy Hill Road to Concord Road.
Motion second to approve this consulting contract. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved, seven zero. Item C is Resolution RES 2016-07, approval of resolution 2016-07 to authorize the execution and delivery of a substitution of escrow agenda, well, it says agenda, but it is agent. For the record, that should change. Escrow agent and authorize the consent to an assignment of master repurchase agreement and assignment of reimbursement and indemnity agreement and allow the mayor to sign and execute all related documents. Mr. Jones, the background, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not even going to begin to provide you the background on this. The finance directors explained it to me twice and I still don't understand it, so I'm going to ask her to come to the podium and update us.
Okay, back in 1998, the city entered into an agreement with GMA on a lease pool agreement and this is just changing the trustee from Bank of New York to Regions Bank. All that fancy word just means we're changing the trustee of the funds.
Okay. Mr. Finley, who chairs the finance and administration committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For those of you who are reading the agenda, just want to make note that it says escrow agent instead of agenda, as the mayor just pointed out. It was explained beautifully, we simply are changing the designated agent in the escrow situation as per the agreement with GMA. They changed the agent, we're required to follow suit. It's very straightforward, this one and the next one will be similarly comported in that regard. So with that, I move approval of resolution 2016-07 to authorize the execution and delivery of a substitution of escrow agent and to authorize the consent to an assignment of master repurchase agreement and the assignment of reimbursement and indemnity agreement and to allow the mayor to sign and execute all related documents.
Second.
Motion second to approve this resolution. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion? It's approved, seven zero. Thank you very much. Item 5D under formal business is Resolution 2016-09, approval of resolution 2016-09, the execution of amendment to the 1998A master lease and option agreement and to authorize the mayor to sign and execute all related documents. Mr. Jones, the background, please.
Mayor, this is a companion document to the one that the mayor and council just took action on and I'll ask Kristen to give us an explanation on this.
Yes, this is the amendment that changes the percentage available for software financing from 10% to 50%. So it's just changing the amount that we're able to finance for software.
Thank you. Mr. Ron Finley, who chairs the finance administration committee.
To that end, we call this the Bill Gates Amendment, back in the day, 10% of your costs for software could be financed, now the rate is about 50% as is required in order to fulfill all of the upgrades typically involved in these significantly complicated transactions. To that end, I move approval of resolution 2016-09, execution of a first amendment to the 1998A master lease and option agreement and to authorize the mayor to sign and execute all related documents.
I second.
Motion second to approve this resolution. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? It's approved, seven zero. Item 6 is previous licenses, A 2016-260, public hearing, previous license requested 2016-260, beer pouring at 3240 South Cobb Drive, Suite 1500, Sneed Group subsidiary in business as Wingstop with Raymond Sneed as the agent, is the agent here, is Mr. Sneed here? Okay. The background, please, Mr. Jones.
Mayor, Raymond Sneed will be the registered agent that's responsible for the sale of alcohol at the reference location. Mr. Sneed has been provided a copy of the alcoholic beverage ordinance and has since attended the mandatory alcohol awareness workshop and we have that certificate on file, the staff's recommendations for approval.
This is a public hearing, is anyone here that's in opposition to or that would like to make any public comment concerning the issuance of this previous license for beer pouring? If the record show there is none, this is in Mrs. Nullwich's district.
It is, hi.
Hey, how you doing?
Mr. Sneed, thanks for coming tonight. I wanted to know just a couple of things, I know that you've been through the required classes and training.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have any questions about those?
Uh, no, ma'am.
And it was explained to you about how the SPD does do sting operations, they, and I'm guessing you're aware of all the economic ramifications of what can happen if.
Yes, ma'am, we currently serve alcohol in Cobb County, basically they operate off the same principles. It's something that we're very strict about. I've got our alcohol policy on hand if you'd like to see it, it's four pages long, eight points, every employee reads it, every employee signs it. We have zero tolerance because of the financial, I mean, like you said, the economic side of stuff for us, we have zero tolerance. We use a state-of-the-art POS system at $20,000 for these terminals and they read driver's license, every time the alcohol sales is prompted, they have to read the driver's license. None of our cashiers ever work without an alcohol permit, if they don't have an alcohol permit, they can't even touch the cash register because the beer is up by the cash register.
Do y'all have cable service or are all sales done at the cash register?
No, it's all sales, it's done at the cash register, we do 75% takeout, that's nationwide, 900 locations, so 75% of the people coming in have no interest in alcohol. At the existing location on South Atlanta Road, we're doing about $300 a month in sales, which boils down to about three beers a day, so we're not, we're not pushing alcohol in any large volume at all.
Okay. What are your hours of operation going to be at this location?
11:00 AM to midnight, seven days a week.
Okay, and are y'all going to be, are y'all open now?
Uh, no, ma'am.
Okay.
Just location, this is a new location?
Yes, sir.
New built?
Yeah, we're going to the Kroger shopping center right here at South Cobb and Concord, so we're just, the status of it right now is permits, we're waiting any day for a permit.
Excellent. Does anyone else have any questions for Mr. Sneed? Well, good, I'm glad you're here, I'm very glad y'all are opening, it's good to see more and more things coming online in that shopping center, you know, that, and this is just a total aside, but for anyone who's interested, it's been a little tricky with that shopping center because the developers had been in bankruptcy for quite a while and we're not able to lease spaces and so over the past few years, people have said, you know, well, why are you, why is, you know, why do we even need space at Belmont or Jock Money Wealth, we have all these empty spaces by the Kroger and it's because nothing was being leased at the time. Now all of that is done, their proceedings are over, trial land's out of that and so they're able to actively lease again, so I anticipate we'll see more and more of these spaces being filled up in that shopping center because if anyone, if you've ever been to that Kroger or to the McDonald's or to the other businesses that are there, you know that it is a very busy shopping center, so hopefully you'll have a lot of good neighbors over there very soon.
Yeah, I don't want to speak on behalf of the landlord, but they have a lot of stuff coming there, it's going to be very, very good for that, that little general area right there. It's going to be very, very good for that little general area right there, a lot of major brands.
That's an excellent segue from what I said earlier about the economic halo effect that we're having on South Cobb Drive. So I'm happy to make this motion tonight. So this time, I do move to approve item 6A, which is the privileged license, 2016-260. This is the public hearing for privileged license request, 2016-260, for beer pouring. The address is 3240 South Cobb Drive, Suite 1500. The applicant is the Sneed Group subsidiary doing business as Wingstop with Raymond Sneed as agent.
Motion second to approve this request. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. This approves 6-0. And Mrs. Wilkinson is not, she left the room, so this approves 6-0.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Good luck. Item 6B under privileged licenses, 2016-261, it's a public hearing, privileged license request, 2016-6261, beer, wine, liquor pouring, 2420, Atlanta Road, Suite 100, 200, Opa, Greek Village Tavernera LLC, Opa, Greek Village Tavernera. Boy, this is, these people are Greek all the way, because I can't even do this name. Is it Trinidad? I knew it was y'all. I knew y'all were the Greek people out there. Yeah, how do you pronounce?
Triadakosis.
And how do you pronounce the last name?
Kokosis.
Kokosis, yeah, that's pretty close.
Like I just said.
They're the agents. I'm going to get Mr. Jones to give us the background. This is, I'll tell you, this is one of the newer restaurants up at Belmont Hills, so we're excited about that. The background, please.
Yeah, Miss Kokosis be the registered agent responsible for the sale of alcohol at this location. Has been provided a copy of the alcohol ordinance and has attended the mandatory awareness workshop. The background investigation that was conducted by the Smyrna Police Department failed to reveal any information that would preclude the issuance of the license.
This is a public hearing. Is anyone here that's in opposition to or that would like to make any public comment concerning the issuance of this privileged license, beer line, beer, wine, liquor pouring? Let the record show there is none. This is in Ms. Anulwich's district. Ms. Anulwich.
Yes. Speaking of long-awaited projects, I think that Belmont might be one of the most long-awaited projects in Smyrna, and so I know we're very excited to now start seeing the privileged licenses thing, you know, in our weekly reports that we get from the Community Development Department every week, we're seeing more and more business licenses come up. When do y'all plan on opening? Do you have an anticipated date?
Hopefully end of August.
Okay, great. That's wonderful. I know, I was by there the other day, being a looky-loo, and the build-out looks like it's going to be extremely impressive. What do you have planned? This is a great opportunity if you want to start, tell folks about what you'll have to offer and...
It will be a traditional Greek restaurant, offering traditional Greek dishes and everyday simple Greek food, tavern food from Sublakia and Gyros, and a little bit of the fancier items. Family-friendly restaurant, nothing, you know, too fancy or anything. And we are seeking to have beer, wine, and other specialties if people would like with the meals.
Uzo?
Uzo, probably. People will want to at least try it.
That stuff's nasty.
It's hot, not too many people will probably like it, but I'm sure somebody will probably...
I'll drink it at your grand opening, but I wouldn't drink it any other time.
Now, I, and I'll ask you some of the same questions I asked the previous applicant, is that you have taken the classes and you're familiar with the laws here in Smyrna?
Yes, ma'am.
And you know about the sting operations and also the economic ramifications that your business will see if there are any violations?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Do you have any other questions for us with regards to enforcement or our ordinance?
Actually, I took the class. I thought it was very educational. I thought that, you know, I'm really glad the police officer that came in and explained all the sting operations is impressive. I used to be a former teacher, so I'm very involved with the kids, and I have a young son who one day will want to grow up and experiment or have a drink. So I'm actually, you know, very impressed that it is very, very serious.
And you'll be training all of your staff accordingly?
A little bit.
Good. What will your hours of operation be?
10:30 to 11:00.
Is that seven days a week?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Oh, well, sales of alcohol?
Right, right.
Oh, I'm sorry, no. On Sundays, it'll be 12:30.
Well, no, yeah, that, hopefully, brunch bill, that's a different issue for a different time, but I thank you for making that distinction. I appreciate that. At this time, then, I am pleased to go ahead and move to approve item 6B, 2016-261. This was the public hearing for the privileged license request, 2016-261, for beer, wine, and liquor pouring, 2420, Atlanta Road, Suite 100 and 200. And this is at the corner of Atlanta Road and Windy Hill. And this is Opa Greek Village Taverna LLC, doing business as Opa Greek Village Taverna with Triadakokosis as agent.
Motion second to approve this previous license for beer, wine, and liquor pouring. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. 7-0, perfect. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. One second here. That ends the privileged licenses. I'm going to go and go through the rest of the agenda. Commercial building permits, we have none. Consent agenda. Mr. Jones, will you please read the consent agenda for council approval?
Yes, sir. There are five items tonight for your consideration on the consent agenda. Item A is the approval of the July 26, 2016, mayor and council meeting minutes. The next is Resolution 201606, which extends the emergency 911 surcharge. There is no change to the surcharge rate, it's just an extension of that. The item C is for Smyrna to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Cobb County. This will share data between Cobb County and the City of Smyrna for our NPDS permitting. That's a stormwater permitting. Item D is RFP 16044. This is for two replacement F-750 dump trucks. Went to the lowest bidder, Rust Truck Center of Smyrna. The combined total for these two is $176,752.84. And lastly, is a replacement landscape maintenance truck. Same award to Rust Truck of Smyrna for this vehicle, $37,686.00.
Motion approved the consent agenda?
Second.
All those in favor of the motion, please vote. This approves 7-0. Okay, we're going to go back to public hearing, item B. Zoning request, Z16007, rezoning from LC and GC to MU Conditional for the development of a new restaurant, 0.142 acre landlot, 452 Concord Road and Hollis Street, Smyrna Restaurant Concept. Is that applicant here now? Okay. If you, you want to give us a background, Mr. Jones? Before we do that, let me just, this is a public hearing. Is anyone here that's in opposition to or that would like to make any public comment concerning this item? Mr. Jones, the background, please. Is your mic on?
007.
I'm sorry, hold on here.
233, okay. Okay. This parcel is located off of Concord Road. It is currently zoned, LC and GC, and the request is to rezone it to multi-use conditional for the development of a restaurant. There are 15 conditions attached to this rezoning request, and 10 of those are considered special conditions. And our community development, Tom Bahartman, is here if you have any specific questions.
Y'all have any type of presentation you're going to make in? This is in Mrs. Anulwich's ward, and we'll do the presentation first, then the applicant will step forward. Oh, yeah, need to be sworn in. You can have a seat wherever you feel comfortable.
It's already been stated, the request is coming to you with a recommendation for approval. It is on Concord Road. It's a, really at the corner of Concord Road and Hollis, where you will have a parking lot that comes in, and then you will have the parcel for the restaurant. And it has been discussed with the applicants, and we've all come to the agreement that the better classification for this piece of property, given the uniqueness of the park and so forth, is to put it in a mixed juice classification with conditions attached. It is for a 3,500 square foot restaurant building. You can see the existing future land use plan would have to be changed to that mixed juice classification as well. Concord Road Linear Park, this was the final design that council approved, that it would actually have some development, and the rest of this would be a linear park. The particular location where the restaurant is was one of the areas that was discussed during those earlier discussions. This is the proposed site plan. The parcel of land has already been purchased by the developer, who will also be the owner of the restaurant. This is the proposed building elevation. It actually is showing, looking at it's closer to Concord Road than it is. We'd actually previously had pushed that back some eight feet or so. So it's a little bit further back than is presented, but the look of the building is the same. This is brick that will be whitewashed, and the developer, owner, may want to give you more detail about that. These are the black and whites there. The reason I was showing you this is twofold. One is to show you the cardinal. The cardinal's not actually painted on there as red. It's actually left, it's actually left after everything is whitewashed on that. But to illustrate it in this black and white, they had to paint, they had to illustrate it as red for us to actually make it out. The second part of that is to point out that in Wade's, which is the name of the restaurant, they've used, again, the bird as part of the apostrophe S on that. There is a story behind that name that the owner may want to convey. Again, this is painted white brick all the way around. Pictures of the subject property. The adjacent property, I think we're all familiar with Concord Road now that it's completed and what we're doing with those parcels and the park. So both community development staff as well as the planning commission recommends approval of this request from LC and GC to MU Conditional with several conditions. The standard conditions that deal with having to have underground utilities, no burying of debris, meeting the tree ordinance and our tree ordinance requirements, providing landscape plans as well as the common areas, those move forward as part of that. But specific conditions that deal directly with this site plan are the following, that there are no setbacks associated with this property, whether it's front side or rear. I think one that's very important here that has been discussed, not only on this site, but has been a requirement in other uses, is that there shall be no bells, whistles, or outdoor paging systems permitted onsite in conjunction with the restaurant, and the restaurant use shall be permitted to have live music onsite. Again, we talked about this at the planning commission as to the hours of operation, and I would ask that the, that the property owner address that when he makes his presentation. The issue about dumpsters have to be surrounded by three-sided brick or stucco with an opaque gate. The issues regarding utility boxes, HVAC components, and so on have to be screened from public right of way moves forward. We are restricting deliveries between 7:00 AM and 9:00 PM. The developer shall install directional signs that direct all delivery trucks to Concord Road, as opposed to turning out on Hollis and going back through the neighborhood. Commercial building shaft entry doors along Concord Road, which you may not have been able to see in that elevation, but they indeed were there. We're also recommending that we prohibit certain uses. Again, this is a technique we have used in other areas of town, so the following uses shall be prohibited. Automobile sales and repair, automobile washing service, board and breeding kennels, dry cleaning plants, adult novelty stores and adult entertainment, pawn shops, check cashing stores, pool hall or arcade, service station, coin-operated laundry, composting facility, funeral homes, group homes, shelter for the homeless, and tattoo parlors. Those would all be prohibited. You may ask yourself, well, we know it's a restaurant, so why do we have this list? Well, we hope it's always a restaurant, but on the off chance that for some reason it changes, this will still apply that it cannot ever go into any one of these uses in the future. Then we move on to the issue about its condition upon the plans that they have submitted for us, as well as the architectural plans. So both the site plan and the architectural plans, which were dated May 13 of this year, they are bound to, and that if there's any change on the elevation, they have to come through me as the director for community development. Happy to answer any questions, and I will leave you with that photo as to what the proposed building looks like.
The applicant, if you'll tell us who you are and...
My name's J.D. Childress. I'm a part-owner of Wade's, Smyrna Restaurant Concepts. Happy to answer any questions you guys might have.
Yeah, do you want to tell us a little bit about more, tell us a little bit more about what Wade's will be, and we've talked about that a little bit here, but also about what start dates you have in mind for construction, for completion, for opening?
All right. Well, Wade's is going to be a ground-up location, obviously up here on Concord Road, where the cuisine's going to be kind of a fun, casual American, if you will, good focus on burgers, definitely in a family-friendly environment, so we're trying to get some food that really appeals to everybody. It's going to be local, regional, seasonal, wherever possible. Jason and I have about 25 years of culinary experience, the two of us, so we're hoping to put some good technique into it and just have some good fun food for the community. Time-wise for the building is kind of the question of the day, but we're probably shooting for early 2017, January, possibly February. So maybe breaking ground in August, probably September.
Thank you. And I want to note, take just a moment to note that this is an interesting location, and when Mr. Sedgworth went over the different stipulations and thing, I think it's important to note that for this location, there are a lot more protections put in place for neighboring residents than you really see at a lot of other commercial ventures that we have here in Smyrna. And the reason why is that this is a particularly unique location. This has always, well, not always, but for the past several decades, has been a commercial property, and everything along Concord Road was commercial. That all changed when the City of Smyrna did the Concord Road widening as part of the, oh, gosh, was it the 2008 splosh? Which splosh was that?
No, that was 411.
I think it was before 11, yeah, but it was... Oh, thank you, Mr. Stokes. The 2005 splosh, and it was another long-awaited project, and it was, it's finally finished. And, but as part of that, and there were a lot of conversations with the community, and I actually came a little bit late to the game in those conversations, because this previously had been all part of Ward 4. But as part of this, there were several public meetings and a lot of discussion about what this area was going to be. It had been a lot of houses that were all, that became commercial, and so there were many conversations about that and public meetings. And the consensus was that most people either preferred that it either be 100% linear park, and other people thought that it should be park and with a little bit of commercial, and a handful smattering people thought, well, the whole thing should be either residential or commercial again. And what the council decided to do is to really go with that sort of hybrid, where it's mostly park, but there is a commercial component to this. And the reason why, many of us on the council, I mean, I speak only for myself, but the reason why I felt that way is because parks are expensive, and to really be responsible to all the taxpayers in the city and all of the people who helped pay for the road widening and who are paying for this park, it is a reasonable thing to have something to help offset the cost of that park maintenance. Parks cost a lot of money. Parks cost a lot of money to maintain, and they cost a lot of money to landscape. And so this, I think, is a nice, it's a nice balance. And also, I think it's going to be nice to have this kind of a neighborhood destination. And from what I understand from having talked to y'all, and you can elaborate on this a little bit, but, and actually, I'll just ask you this question. Tell us how y'all want to be a neighborhood restaurant?
Well, we really want to be a place that people in the neighborhood behind us can really come in and only come once, but want to really want to come back. For me, that's always the problem. I go to a lot of restaurants and eat out, and there's a lot of them I don't want to go back to. So we're really trying to develop a community feel where people want to go back, where our servers know their names, where, you know, our patrons know our servers' names as well. So it's a very comfortable, casual environment, which I think Smyrna's really lacking.
That is what I really wanted to say just about the, there are a lot of stipulation things in place, and you know, I wish y'all all the success in the world on the off chance something does happen. I do think it's good that we do have these protections in place for the residents nearby. And there, you know, there are buffer requirements, there are vegetative buffers, there is, you know, there are, the park is, you know, we're starting to talk about the landscape plans for the park, and I think that's something that hopefully everyone in the community is going to be very, very pleased by and will excited. We're excited to start to see that, you know, planting, things like going on. If you've been by there lately, the sidewalks are in, and that's also a very, a very good thing that is happening. Does anyone else on council have any questions?
I've got a couple. I think it's a great concept, both hamburgers are going to be good, but you are backing up to a residential neighborhood. Of course, that commercial's been there for a long time. I guess this is really for Ken. Ken, if someone had wanted to build or build a restaurant under the previous GC commercial zone, could they have done that anyway? Could they?
Yes, sir. They definitely could have done that. That would have been handled administratively. It would not have come to y'all. We would have handled it internally. They would have submitted plans, and we would have, you know, taken them through that plan review process we've talked about in the past, just to make sure that they met all the requirements and the permits would have been issued.
There was a mention of parking spaces. One of the residents mentioned maybe about 100 parking spaces. Is that in the plan?
That's in the plan.
Okay.
Yes, there's about 30 on the western side of Hollis, and about another, I think, proposed right now is about 70 on the eastern side of Hollis.
Mr.?
Yeah, the final numbers, mayor, have not been worked out, but there is 30-some next to the restaurant, and then there will be somewhere in that 50 to 70 range on the other side of Hollis Street.
And to clarify, those will not be for the exclusive use of restaurant patrons?
No, no. That parking is there for the park, but obviously people going to the restaurant can also use the spaces as well.
Mr. Sudrith, while you're there, if I could ask, since you indicated that a restaurant could have been approved here administratively, it's here before us because of two basic things, the parking component and the alcohol component. Am I to understand that correctly?
Yes, and there's probably a third thing, Mr. Fennell, on that, and that is the uniqueness because of the park atmosphere and tying in that we felt it was just a better classification to actually have it in the mixed use, that to really emphasize the fact that you do have a park and you have a restaurant, and they are, even though you have a privately-owned restaurant, they publicly own park, they really do sort of play off of each other.
Any other questions, comments? Mrs. Nowlitch.
Right. If there are no further questions at this point, I would like to go ahead and move to approve item 4B, which is 2016-233. This was the public hearing for zoning request Z16-007 rezoning from LC and GC to multi-use, excuse me, MU Conditional for the development of a new restaurant. It's a 0.142 acre tract, landlot 452, Concord Road and Hollis Street, and the applicant is Smyrna Restaurant Concepts LLC.
Second.
Question second. Any further discussion? I'll vote in favor of Mr.? 270. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to committee reports. We'll start tonight with Mr. Ron Fennell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Many of you witnessed Thursday night's weather episode. Just want to bring some of you up to speed. What we have learned is a five-inch rain in a very short period of time had some consequences. I've been told of some trees that have been twisted, so there was a little burst. Was it Saturday? It was Saturday. Sorry. My days are all running together these days. Thank you. But that episode is going to have some consequences to us. We're still evaluating the cost. There was some damage to a couple of our public buildings. We're still fully trying to evaluate that and assess how mitigation of that damage and the costs associated with it relative to both our insurance and the repair that's going to be required, but I just wanted to give you a heads up to that effect. Luckily and fortunately, no one was reported harmed in either the public space or any of the residents in the area that were affected by the rain. And I know there were some impacted parties over in Miss Blue Steen's ward as well, so it was quite an episode. It was a short storm, but it was pretty full of water, so we're all experiencing a little deja vu here on some previous storms that we've had come through town. Anyway, I have three other items I want to mention. My town hall meeting, I've advertised it will be in August. We're looking at a location and a date change in order to accommodate both staff and an applicant for consideration, and we're awaiting one further piece of information on one of the items that may be on the agenda. Whether it will be or it will not be depends upon the feedback from that one episode. And I want to congratulate the Smyrna Sharks. We have some swimmers going to the state meet this Friday up in Cherokee County, so hopefully at our next meeting, we'll be able to report on those winners, and maybe we can bring the young folks in who've been representing Smyrna this year. And I'll tell you what, the waters at the district meet were shark-infested. We had Smyrna Sharks on the board all the time. It was really exciting to see. Smyrna Blue, 10 and under baseball team competed for a state championship this past weekend. Does anybody know the outcome Saturday? Anybody Sunday? Saturday, they came up short, 10 to 5, to Carterville, and I have not heard the final results of Sunday. It was a double elimination, so they could be the champs or they could be the runner-up. Either way, we're proud of them. They've come a long way. We had some really great kids playing baseball, representing, and carrying the banner of Smyrna all around the southeast. With that, Mr. Mayor, I yield.
Mr. Doug Stoner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few comments tonight concerning our community development with the approval tonight of the study on South Cobb Drive that we have now have three studies currently going on for this coming year, and I know community development's going to be busy on those, but definitely important for the future of our city and what those studies are going to be able to provide, both through the staff and to the members of this council, an understanding of our options and choices to be made as we go through redevelopment down toward the new Braves Stadium and also along Spring Road, and also hopefully soon here with South Cobb Drive. So I just wanted to make note of that fact. I know that was an important part as we look forward to this year, and hopefully have that information for us as we move forward. Also, I want to thank the city and city administrator and our public safety folks, particularly with what happened over at, on Atlanta Road the other evening, that storm that came through. We had, I believe it was a total of four power poles that came down along with some trees, where we had to block off Atlanta Road pretty much through the whole evening until early the next morn, really almost midday next morning on Sunday, and want to thank them for how quickly they responded to that situation because obviously it was a very dangerous situation. They're on a major thoroughfare, and at this point, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Mr. Susan Wilkerson.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to encourage everyone to look at the City of Smyrna website and go to the library section. There's lots of things going on at the library. There's International Chess Day is on Wednesday, July 20th, all day, and you can pick up chess games throughout the library. There on Sunday, August the 7th, is the first Sunday lecture series, and there's the, starting, well, on the calendar, starting on Monday, there's lots of activities for kids. I believe tomorrow is Lego Club, Tween Time, and then on July 22nd, there's Fantastic Fables with Lee Bryan, and that's the summer reading finale. So I encourage you to look at the website and see if there's anything that interests you. Thank you. With that, I yield.
Scotty Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank everybody that came out this past Saturday for keep Smyrna beautiful and picked up their miles and just picked up around the city in general. With that being said, I picked up my area on Saturday, and it's a little disheartening to think that the number of people that still throw trash out the windows of their cars. I just ask everybody to keep in mind, you know, this is our city, this is where we live, and take pride in it. All you got to do is take it home with you, throw it in the trash can when you get home. Cigarette butts are always a problem, and you know, same thing there. There are thousands of cigarettes in my little mile that I walk, and my wife and I pick up as many as we can, but you know, find a place to dispose of them besides throwing them in the street. With that, I yield.
Ms. Terry Nowlitch.
Thank you. Yes, I am glad that everyone made it through that rain, but we did, here in the downtown area, have my neighbor's rain gauge measured five inches, and seeing the pictures that I've seen, especially from runoff and things coming from construction sites, I think that's probably accurate. The good news is, is it seems like for the most part, the existing, at least in this area, that had some terrain, existing detention facilities, the storm drains, the duck pond over there, everything worked the way it was supposed to, so that was a very good thing. I'm also glad that we were able to vote tonight to keep the mileage rate the same. We have, I think, two decades now of having either reduced it or kept it the same, so we're, I was pleased to make that vote tonight. Also wanted to, speaking of voting, note that early voting is still ongoing this week in Cobb County. There are two items on the ballot. One is the Cobb Commission chair race. The second item is for a judicial runoff, so please make sure, if you can't make it to early voting this week, that you do vote next Tuesday, July 26th. The final thing I want, actually, two more things. One, I can't believe this is going on the public record, but Pokemon is a big thing, and if you have spent any time around the downtown area, you have probably seen a lot of people. My daughter, on Friday night, we walked up to the Market Village for supper, and she counted 100 people playing Pokemon Go. They're not always looking where they're going, so please, if you are driving through an area that is a Poki Spot or a Pokemon Gym, and there is, again, this, just, it's just what it's called, be mindful of pedestrians who are, you should always be mindful of pedestrians who are walking around, but take extra care because some of them might be trying to catch a Pokemon and not necessarily be looking out for your car. And if you are out there playing Pokemon and you happen to also be listening to this, if there is a Venn diagram overlap of Pokemon Go players who also watch city council meetings, I encourage you to also go into some of the stores we have down here and spend some money, which is a great segue to my final point, which is restaurants. And in Smyrna, as you saw tonight, we have a lot of restaurants coming on board. There are actually two restaurants in Smyrna that are on the eater. Atlanta's Hot 38 for the month of July, that is a big deal. The Smyrna restaurant scene is growing, it is expanding, it is, includes a range of offerings, and I really think that all of these restaurants we're seeing are a fantastic economic carbon group of good things that are coming as we continue to come out of the recession and as Smyrna continues to thrive. So I'm very excited about that, and with that, I yield.
Ms. Andrea Blue Steen.
I could not believe Saturday afternoon for about two hours, what with the rain and the lightning and the, then I had a lady call me and tell me that it was raining in her unit, and I found out that there were, a tree had fallen and it split the building in half, and still, they didn't cancel the concert. I thought, it's crazy. If they were in this radius where I am, there's no way that you'd even want to get in your car and go anywhere. But luckily, no one was hurt. There were several trees down. I drove around my ward today, and for those of you that did suffer some damage, I hope that it, that things improve greatly, very shortly. But for most, for the most part, I guess they had water more than anything else, more than these huge trees. And as far as Pokemon go, I've never tried it, don't want to try it, so for those that are doing it, have fun.
How are you?
Only you, but that I yield.
Mr. Derek Norton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick thank you to our staff who's put in a lot of extra hours over the last few days cleaning up after the storm. Really appreciate the hard work that they have done and are continuing to do to clean up after that. With that, I yield.
Mr. Mike Jones, anything else?
Yes, no.
Scott Cochran. Ms. Heather Korn, Assistant City Clerk. We have no show call here. We've got a couple of folks signed up for citizens input. Alec Bakri, 3459, Sean E. Trail, comments?
My first comment tonight is a great opportunity that was missed with the people of Smyrna. It was in the paper about a possible increase for certain taxes for certain businesses that was, I was made aware of, and they had times of last Monday, 10 and 6 that evening. There was no information in a flyer in the water bill announcing that, and there were certain businesses that say will be affected with an increase in the city, and I wanted to understand it. So I attended the 10 o'clock in the morning, and I was the only one there. I found out on the 6 o'clock, no one showed. Additionally, I had a time this morning of 10 o'clock, no one showed. No one knew. And what surprised me was, at the last council meeting, not one person in front of me mentioned this as a reminder for people at home that you had the opportunity to meet with the tax people on these time slots. I think this is important, that if it's not in the water bill, at least a week before, a week and a half before, someone on this council should have reminded people as an opportunity to go with that. Secondly, if there's a car for sale for $20,000, you're interested in it, and you pay $84,000 for it, and you might not be sure what you're going to do with the car, you put another $60,000 in renovations in it, like four-wheel drive and what have you, and then you're going to decide what you're going to do with it. Well, this is the analogy on the Reed Roadhouse. To pay this absolute exorbitant rate, you must have definitive plans from the beginning what you're going to do with it. And up to this point, I have yet to, all my, many other people, what you're going to do with the Reed house. I've heard if it's weddings and lectures, then you're going to compete with Bronner and the community center. I find this absolutely unbelievable that you're going to have that situation, and the people, since you're using their tax money for this house, you should have people here mentioning what the update on what they're going to do with the house. I'd love to see the solution here with the people that voted for it. I'd love to see you all open up your wallets and pool your efforts there and buy the house yourself, and then you can do whatever you want with it. But I don't see how we're going to get our $3 million back. It'll be interesting down the line to see how much that house is even used for. Again, you've got Bronner, and you've got the community center, four functions, and I believe that there's a pattern here. If you're not going to have definitive plans, then you shouldn't be in the real estate business, and that's what's happening. And I hope we do find out how much of it is going to be used, and I'd love an explanation from someone in the update on it. Many people are waiting for it. Thank you.
Randy Jordan, 837 Wells Circle, variance. B16-038, R039. I guess I got that right.
Yes, those are two variances that were passed by the License and Variance Board last Wednesday, and one in particular is kind of troublesome for me and for many in my neighborhood, and I'm not here alone. In fact, anybody from, please stand, from Wells Circle. So there's several of us here that feel like I do, and we're not, we're not, we don't want to come in here screaming and holler, we just want to express our concerns. One variance in particular was at the dead end of a street. The notice for the variance was sent to one person on our street for some reason. The notice for the variance was sent to one person on our street for some reason. I think the rules abiding properties, adjacent properties, and this thing fell, you know, the property across the street is owned by Smyrna, the Public Works. And in our neighborhood, we really would like some development. The variance allowed for a house to be placed on this property that was less than what the zone required. So the variance approved for a smaller house. Us in the neighborhood would like to keep with the zoning requirement, which is a minimum of 2,000 square foot house. Another thing that was kind of concerned is, when I did get word of this, which was Tuesday, the hearing was Wednesday, two of us came down here and we opposed it. We're not opposed to, please come into our neighborhood and develop it, but let's stay within the zoning code, the R15 zoning code. That's our interest, you know, it makes sense to us. But it was, so we reacted, we didn't have very much time to react. And when I came down and opposed it and said that, the only hardship that was mentioned, and there may have been two, but they were very, one was that, well, it meets the size of all the other houses. That's the hardship. This reduced size will be the same as all the other houses in there. That's not a hardship. A hardship would be, hey, to get a 2,000 square foot house on this quarter acre lot, you know, the square footage, the percentage, et cetera, et cetera. We need a variance for a setback. That's what variances are for. But this variance was used to allow a developer to come in, an honorable developer. We have no problems with the developer, which is Habitat for Humanity. In fact, it's an honor. I've worked on Habitat Homes, and I think it's a great organization. And we welcome them to the neighborhood. We would just like them to build a house within the minimum or the minimum, meet the minimum of the R15 code. So I feel like there should be special consideration given to our cause. Number one, we had no notice. Number two, this is the first time that I can tell from public records that a reduced square footage variance has been applied for in our area. The two that are up on Pat Mel were done within the city, and that was explained in the variance hearing, was done within the city, not made public, said, well, we're going to subdivide the property, the lot, into two, but the size of the houses were not made known to the public, so they just built them.
Mr. Jordan, and I'm going to have to, you've gone a minute over the limit. If you want to just wrap it up real quick, we try to keep.
Well, I think that it should be reheard. I think that now that us in the community are aware of it, let us now do what the zoning requirement or the variance, the spirit of the rule. Inform the community, let them react, have a hearing. We weren't given a fair chance to do that, and we ask that it be reheard or brought into the city council as an agenda to where we can address it.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Dave Vargas, 835 Lake Court Recycling Center. And normally, we keep the comments to three minutes. If it's somebody's first time they've been here, we let them, or I'll let them go a little bit over, so.
May I pass these out? Well, I killed another tree, 70 pages. Another 81 people saying that this is ridiculous. You promised August 1st for something. You didn't say anything about it yet. I don't know when you're going to talk about it. Are you going to talk about it at all with any of your council people? You promised, Adam from CBS 46, definitely wants to do another update. Definitely wants to do another update. He wants to do just another interview. I don't want to do it. It doesn't make Smyrna look good at all. It makes us look like crap. You snuck this thing in. I rode up and down the, up and down the road with my little kid on the back, and our neighbors are cheering us on because you guys snuck this recycling center into our neighborhood and it's ruining our lives. They're cheering us on, literally. Again, you know, join the club, you know? It just seems like you guys are, you're just putting these places in. I don't think this was even zoned correctly either, so if I need to get a lawyer on that, I will too. So I just can't believe you didn't talk about it. You promised August 1st. You're not being a good neighbor like you promised. CBS 46 wants to do a review, and they want to actually put this petition online, and I know that will get a lot of votes. So I don't want to threaten, but this has to be done. Thank you.
That's the end of the list of folks that signed up to speak. Just for clarification, at the end of every meeting, we allow for citizens input. We allow any citizen that wants to get up, they have to sign in, your name, address, and what your topic is, and then we allow you three minutes to say whatever you want to say during a hearing that, a scheduled hearing like Public Hearing tonight, when I asked for public comment, you get five minutes there. Also, during this period, it's not an opportunity for us to debate the issues. We'd be here all night long to debate issues and go back and forth. So I will say this on recycling, yes, I said I thought we'd have a resolution by August 1st, and I think that we will have a resolution on the recycling issue. With the folks that are here for the other variants, I know that I've talked to a couple of y'all, or at least one, Randy, I guess I talked to you yesterday on the sofa when I was taking a nap, but that's okay. So, you know, just know that we allow citizens to get up and say what they want to say, and then normally, there is some kind of meeting afterwards on the sides, but we are working on both those. I know they're working on the recycling issue, but I'll say this, we just didn't sneak the recycling center in. It was a location that we selected and had several meetings, and I did promise the citizens of that area that we were going to be good neighbors, and we're still working on that, and we intend to be good neighbors. So with that.
Is it okay if I speak about the variants?
I mean, it's not going to be a lot of comments. You've already had your time at the end of the meeting.
Well, that's what I wanted to say, that I did bring it up to my colleagues several times about appealing this decision because I do think that the neighborhood didn't get a chance to voice their concerns and meet with the builder that's building the home. And I think that it's very important that their voices are heard, and I do support appealing that decision so that it can be heard by the mayor and council. I think it's important that the citizens' voices are heard, and I don't, I personally do not feel like it's undermining the council. I feel like if we don't hear the voices of the citizens, that it's undermining the citizens. And I just want my constituents to know that I have brought this up several times, and, you know, so far, they feel that it's not, you know, I guess, it's something that they don't want to do, but I think it's very important. I also want to say that it's always been a policy that when citizens object at the variance board meeting, that it was brought to the city council. Some time ago, we did discuss the privilege license and wanting those to be heard at the License and Variance Board, but we did not change the items such as this, where citizens come. And I just feel like it's very important that we hear what the citizens have to say. And I also want to let Randy know and the other citizens that I sent the information to you when I received it from the staff, which I called to get that, and it wasn't ready at the time I called. And my initial email that I received had the incorrect address. It had Wells, Wells Drive, or instead of Wells Circle, and I went out there and could not find the variant sign on Wells Drive. And then, you know, the address was also changed on Wells. That's another thing. If you Google it, it's a 118 address, but the address was changed to, I think, 903, which is, that was changed at the time, right before the hearing, I guess. That's the first time I saw it, was in the issue sheet that I got right before the hearing. So I just want to let you all know that. Thank you.
So it was brought up, it was brought out of the county council meeting at about 8:20.